Of March 2nd, 2015 to order, and if you would, stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the Michigan, and to the city of this town. See you beautiful people in those years, you imagine all the hurries you see, where meaning for our community and justice for all is our arena. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Maluma, Sheppers, here.
Bowman, here.
Stevens, here.
Mayor Falcon, here.
And the next, the first thing on our agenda is the approval of that agenda. But we do have to amend the agenda, amend the agenda to add an additional appointment to the Board of Review under Appointments. So, in the action needed, I'd request a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add two appointments to the Board of Review under Appointments.
And to revise the one for the Construction Board of Appeals?
That's correct.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Maluma?
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, we will open the floor for our first public comments this evening. If you do want to come forward, if you would please write and say your name and your address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the construction agenda. This evening, we have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on February 16th, as well as the minutes from the closed session that was held on the 16th of February. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the construction agenda.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Maluma?
Sheppers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Evening, this evening, we have a community spotlight. Marcus, would you like to do that introduction?
I'd be happy to. We have Gabby Chapman here with two very important people to introduce. They are the Miss and the S.F. Queen, and they're runner-up. And Gab, if you wouldn't mind maybe explaining a little bit about the special event and introduce our two guests, that'd be good.
Gabby, could you come up to the podium?
Sorry, Gab on the podium.
Good evening, Council, my name is Gabby Chapman, and I am the Pageant Director for the Miss North American Snow Festival Queens Pageant. With me this evening is Queen Emily Fox and First Runner-Up Mallory Bosher. Both girls are very active in our community, and this is my third year doing it, and I'm just looking forward to this year of working with them. And they each have something they'd like to say. So we'll go with Emily first.
Okay. Congratulations, Emily.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Council. We're having some crowding difficulties, but it's my new one, so I can't get it to stay in my head, I have an odd shaped head, apparently. I know many of you I met last year, Mayor Falcon, you were on the board for the community[313.38][313.41]interviews, I'd like to thank you, who I met last year and this year, and who I already know. This year, I'm looking forward to a very exciting but busy year, doing all the festivals and events around the community, and very excited to get to know a few more people in the community, getting my name out there, being there, supporting our community, doing some volunteering, reading, we're setting that up for reading at the schools this month into this Reading Month, looking forward to that. I'm very excited to represent the community and the snow festival.
You almost lost it.
I know, I'm trying, we gotta...
You need an op doo.
Yeah, just to like stick it around, I need something like that.
Ah, good evening, and I don't know a lot of you, but I do know Mayor Falcon, and she was also on the part of the interview crew, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And I am also looking forward to getting to know my community better. I've always been involved with it, so getting my name out there, and like Emily said, we're going to the schools to do Reading Month, so hopefully I can get to my school, I go to McBain, so hopefully I can get over there and read to them.
Congratulations, Mallory.
Thank you.
And that's all we have? Thank you. Go ahead.
Nice job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good to see you too.
Good luck. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is Communications this evening. Sandy?
Yes, we have a request from the Westford County Great Start to display a banner from April 6th through April 13th, 2018, for the Month of the Young Child.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of the banner from April 6th to the 13th for the Month of the Young Child.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Maluma?
Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes.
The next request is from Oasis Family Resource Center to display a banner from April 13th through April 20th, 2015, for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request from Oasis Family Resource Center to display a banner from April 13th to the 20th of 2015 for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Maluma?
Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes.
The next request is also from Oasis Family Resource Center, they are asking to place approximately 100 garden flags in the city park on April 2nd, 2015, again for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Are they gonna do that on a snowbank, or...
Is anyone from Oasis here? Okay.
Don't believe so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the placement of approximately 100 garden flags in the city park on April 2nd, hopefully in grass, for 2015 for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Maluma?
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Okay, then we have this evening's appointments.
One of them.
Yes, there are a lot.
Good.
All right, chat.
Yes, first, it's being recommended that Council approve the reappointment of Curtis Schultz to the DDA for a four-year term to expire on March 1st, 2019.
And then, Sir Curtis is sick, I mean, he's already served for 16 years on that DDA, so he's looking to make it 20 with this. Thinking him, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Curtis Schultz to the Downtown Development Authority for a term expiring March 1st, 2019.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Maluma?
Sheppers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes.
Next is being recommended to appoint Randy Norman to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire on March 2nd, 2017.
I will make that motion to appoint Randy Norman to a Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire March 2nd, 2017.
I think it's wonderful to see Randy come back so quickly. He asked for his retirement to come back and volunteer for the city.
I am delighted. Wonderful that we got all of these applicants for this construction board. We got some really good applicants here. It's gonna be a great board.
I should, I'm sorry.
Okay, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Maluma?
Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes.
Next is being recommended to approve the appointment of John Sari to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire on March 2nd, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of John Sari to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Maluma?
Mayor Falcon?
Yes.
Next is being recommended to approve the appointment of Lawrence Rastbierski to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire on March 2nd, 2017.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lawrence Rastbierski to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term expiring in 2017.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Maluma?
Sheppers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Ooh, there is another one.
One more.
There is one more, the one we added, yes. Hey, Sandy.
Okay, we also are recommending the appointment of Ken Bigelow to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire on March 2nd, 2017.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Ken Bigelow to serve two years on the Construction Board of Appeals with his term ending March 2nd, 2017.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Maluma?
Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. So now we need one more on that one?
Yep, I was gonna, for those of you that are coming, we have one vacant spot left.
Great.
Let me see that, please.
There was another packet, in our packet, there was another pamphlet sent, and...
He decided not to, right?
I thought we had four on there too.
Yeah, the other one decided not to do it.
There was one stuck back.
Okay.
Okay, searching gives to the Board of Review, it's being recommended to approve the appointment of Larry Butler to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on March 2nd, 2017.
I would gladly like to make this one, because we've had, tonight, we're pushing two board members that, if we start tomorrow, I wanna thank both of them for stepping in. We've had a, one member, Tony Rubio, that served on our board, but took a commission position with the veterans at the county level, and then can't serve on it. So this came up last week, and then Larry Butler stepped in, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve Larry Butler for a two-year term, with his term expiring March 2nd, 2017.
Support. Another ex-employee, a retired employee who's stepping up to volunteer.
That would be great. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Maluma?
Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes.
It's also being recommended that Kathleen Williams be appointed to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on March 2nd, 2017.
I will make that motion to recommend Kathleen Williams to serve on the Board of Review for a two-year term expiring in 2017.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Maluma?
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Oh, that's a lot of words.
That'd be a record for the most appointments in a night.
Marcus, do we know how many MTCs we still have on our boards?
Um, we do, but I don't have it at my fingertips.
Oh, okay.
We do have it listed online.
I wanna keep that out in front of us, so we can get them off field.
It is listed online.
Okay.
We encourage the general public, or anybody, to go on our city website, catalic-mi.net, if you're interested, and also download an application as well to apply.
Okay, thank you. Do you know of Marcus City Manager's report?
Um, thank you very much, Mayor Members of the City Council. At this time, I'd like to introduce Doug Beyond, the Consumers Government Affairs Representative, to the City Council. Doug?
Thank you, Marcus. Commissioners, our councilmembers, good to see you this evening. Once again, we do tree work throughout our areas, our communities, really to look at reliability, safety, and making sure that power stays on for our customers. We will be doing some work in the city again, and we just wanted to go through that. We like to make it public and let people understand what we're gonna be doing, where we're gonna be doing it, and the scope of the work. So with me this evening is Joe Shanks with our Forestry Division, and he will walk you through today the work we're gonna be doing here in the near future in the city. Thank you. I'll try not to screw up the cleaner. Yeah, my name is Joe Shanks, I'm the Forester for Consumers Energy. I think this is the third or fourth time in the last five years since I've been back up here that I've come and presented to you. The work we're doing this year is a pretty small project, but it's still in a highly visible area, so we figured we'd go through what we're gonna do and why we do it. Trees, the reason we do tree work is for the safety of public and the employees. Trees cause are number one cause of outages, roughly 40% of our outages are caused by trees. Keeping the trees cleared away from our lines helps us protect our equipment, and also gives us access to our equipment. If we keep the trees away, we can get in, usually when there's an outage, shorter restoration times, because we can actually get to the problem and fix it, or to be able to go out and replace or test our equipment. What we do to notify the public, the public or the property owners, we do three sets of notification. We mail a planner postcard, which the residents will receive here in the next couple weeks. On it explains why we do the work, what we do. And then, when we get out there, if they have work on their property, we also leave a door card for them with the contact number of the person that marked the trees, so if they have any specific questions on their trees, that they can contact the person that marked the trees. And then, thirdly, before we even start the work, before our tree crews even get out there, we send a circuit letter too, which again has all the information on why we do it. There's a pamphlet in there that explains what they can expect, and also on there is the contact number for the person that marked the trees. So we do try to attempt to notify the customers three times. Some of the areas we get to have vacant property owners or snowbirds, and if we're there in the winter, we also send a card to their, to wherever they get their electric bill, so it usually gets forwarded down to Ford or wherever they may be. The markings that you may see out there, we always mark trees with blue paint, an X is a tree slated to be removed, a dot is a tree that's slated to be trimmed. There might be a slash on something that's smaller than four inches, we consider that brush, that is also slated to be removed. And then, what we started last year, we're looking at hazard trees along our main lines. Primarily, the reason we use A is it started as an ash tree designation, and we've expanded a little bit. But we are very aggressively pursuing the removal of ash trees before they fall down the hair wires from the Emerald Ash Bar. After the marking's done, again, the door cards left, our planners will revisit the property owners if they have any questions. We follow the answering the questions on the front end, it goes a long way with the customer. What makes, when we look at a tree, a couple things we consider, the species of the tree. Your species of tree, like silver maple willows, have really fast growth, and they're a little more aggressive on those trees that have a faster growth rate. The health of the tree, location of the tree to the line, if it's dead center, if it's setting off to the side, and what the voltage of the line is, the higher the voltage, the more clearance that's required. Debris cleanup in a maintained area, which would be mostly the work within the city. Brush under three inches, we put it through a chipper, we chip it up, haul it away. Some residents or property owners ask for the chips, and we will, we will leave those if they would like them. The wood's cut into handling lengths, so it's cut smaller, so it can be picked up and moved. And then the stumps are flushed as close to the ground as possible, and when it's a deciduous species, non-conifer, we treat that stump too, so it doesn't resprout. And then, in unmaintained areas, like I said, there's very few spots here in the city, but if it's a woodlot, big steep hill, what we do is we lay all the debris off to the far edge, instead of dragging it up the hill, we just lay it off the edge, mulch it up, leave it for the, we call it rabbitat, you know, so the rabbits have someplace to live. And then, the area that we're doing work this year, like I said, and Doug said, it's a very small area, it's, the majority of the residents would be along lake, up to Far, and kinda up towards the Avon and Seventh Avenue area, so there is very little work this year. It's only three miles worth of line we're doing in the city, is all that we have planned. With our meeting with Marcus, we know there's a road project going on up there, so we're gonna get this tree work done before that, so that we don't, so that we're out of the area before the tree project starts. Something that we supply to our customers is Right Tree, Right Place. We try to educate the customers on the closer you are to the line, plant shorter growing species, then we'll never have to be there, and it's less impact on the property owner if you plant the appropriate species. You know, some smaller trees, red bud, crab apple, that sort of thing, there are species, they grow up to about 15, 20 foot tall typically, so those are perfect to be in the close proximity to our wires. And then, when you get farther away, you know, you can go to taller species. And just a couple places, if people have any questions, consumersenergy.com backslash forestry has our, what we do, again, more reasons of why we do the work. You can also call our 800 number, which is 1-800-477-5050, if you have any concerns, tree or not, and also, thearborday.org is a good webpage to get the same information. So, with that, do you guys have any questions for me, for...
So the small area that you're doing this year, is it small because our trees are in good condition, or is it budget reason?
It's, how we determine what we do, which lines we do is all performance based. We do the worst performing lines. And it just happens, we've done a lot of work in the city in the last couple years, so we've got the majority of downtown area and around the lakes, we're fully creeping out and getting everything done, where we've done it in the last five, six years, so it's all performance based, depending on the customer minutes and last time on there.
I'm assuming that the reason why you do this type of work is because over time, trends would perhaps show that if the trees are not in the area of making contact with your lines, that overall reliability of the electric power that you provide would increase, presumably.
Yep, yeah, like I said earlier, the trees are the number one cause of outages, so keeping the trees out of the lines really increases our reliability out there.
I know that the first year you came and started really aggressively doing this, it's pretty much eliminated the outages, other than if it seems to be accident related on that, but do you have any record of that? Because I remember prior, it seemed like the tree outages were high, but you've done a great job of eliminating them in the city.
Yeah, and from my knowledge, in the six years I've been back up here, like you said, the carpool accidents really outnumber, and I can't think of any real major outage caused by trees.
I just, I think back to some of those winter storms that, I mean, Magglio's was housed with all the consumers' trucks going to other areas, but the city didn't have any.
Yep.
So it's, I know it's been, it seems like it's been very successful, what you're doing.
Yeah, and usually, once we come in, and if we are aggressive the first time through, after that, you know, it's less and less work every time we come in. If we do it right the first time, then the work, repeat work drops. Okay, thank you.
Mayor and Members of the City Council, this next item is with respect to asking Council for approval of the 2015 farmers' market. The packet does include a very detailed communication about the market, its history, its location, to try to summarize a little bit. The Cadillac Farm Market is requesting approval of the use of the Lake Street Public Parking Lot located just west of the DEQ office facility, this is the location it's been in the last several years. The market plans to open on June 16th for half-days from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and on Tuesdays, on Tuesdays and Fridays, starting July 3rd. The market is looking at opening on a full-day basis from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. every Tuesday and Friday until October 30th, 2015. The market is recognized as a part of an event through the Cadillac Downtown, Downtown Cadillac Association. It looks like, according to some of the information in the packet, the market's been in existence since 1982, and there are five conditions, if you will, that I'm gonna just read aloud that are in the packet, just for the public record. As a part of the staff recommendation for approval of the use for Lake Street Parking Lot for the 2015 Cadillac Farm Market season, and for the placement of the signs for the market accordingly, one, the placement of the signs should be limited to the days of the market's operation. The signs shall be placed not more than one hour prior to the day's opening of the market, and should be removed no later than one hour after the day's closing of the market. Two, the signs shall be located such that they are compliant with the standards of the B2 zoning district. Three, the signs shall be placed such that they are compliant with the clear vision setback requirements of the Michigan Department of Transportation. Four, the farm market sites shall be maintained in a responsible manner, the ball litter and debris properly disposed of at the end of each operational day. And five, the North Lake Street access to the parking shall be closed during the market's hours of operation, and should be cordoned off accordingly. The area may certainly be used by vendors for the placement of stands and the like, but should not be used for customer circulation and parking. It's a safety issue that you were concerned about. Also, just to recognize, Gene is here this evening, and perhaps may want to address City Council as well, so...
Yes, I have some questions on the, number one. First two, the signs can only be put up an hour before we're open. I come into town like a quarter after 6:00, and I drop my signs off on Main Street, and I go down to the market, because I have to be there at least by 7:00 when vendors start coming in to show them where they can park. So would that be a problem, having them there at like 6:30 in the morning rather than 7:00?
Well, the idea was to not have them out there more than an hour before the market opens, so that we just don't have the...
That means I have to leave the market, then go back up there at, up to Main Street, you know, in half hour, and then back...
Can we amend it to be an hour and a half, or four hours?
The staff concern was just simply wanting to make sure that there was, again, not a proliferation of signs. I'm okay with amending it by a little bit.
Because I've always done it. I mean, I, other years, I put it on the, out there.
You've been breaking the law all these years.
Don't give me...
She's trying to get a ticket.
I've never had any problem. I talked to the DEQ about, no, not DEQ, the...
Downtown DDA?
Well, whatever. To where I could put the signs, so I put them where he told me I could put them. And they are out of the vision of the corners of the streets.
And that.
So an hour and a half, would that be awful, Gene?
Yeah, that would be great. Because I have signs I have to put up at the market, too, and some of them take real time to put up, and so I'm busy putting up signs. And then, what I wanted to know, too, I can buy... And then, what I wanted to know, too, I can mark off that north end of the lot, so people can't come in, but I have to leave it open for vendors to come in. Is that all right, until the vendors get there, that I can block it off?
Yeah, yeah. In fact, we would encourage that the vendors use that part of the lot. So yes.
The north end to enter?
Yes.
Okay. Because I have a lot of them that come in through that way.
Yeah.
Especially if they park, if their spot is down toward that end anyhow.
And we're hoping that maybe some of the vendors might, you might have them actually located in the general vicinity as well.
Right. Well, we did at one time. But then, the mayor at that time came down and told us we had to have parking at the north end, and that's why we started leaving parking down there. And I know, it does get kind of iffy at times, because I've seen people get, I've seen accidents here, and I've had few people almost get hit, too. Because they're not, people aren't paying attention. Another thing, too, is the, after twenty-six. They complained last year because I put up signs saying that they weren't allowed to park there when the market was in force. And so then, someone came down from city, told me I had to leave that open for them to park to...
The north end of the lot?
At the north end.
Right, at this point, we're not...
Not anymore.
Because people still come in there and park and go to the restaurant, and not necessarily come to the market. And they take up spaces where other people could park that were coming to the market.
Right. So, things to be closed.
Okay, that sounds great.
So does it look like you'll be able to have more vendors now?
I think I could put more vendors down there if they have a small vehicle, being that the way the parking lot is kind of on an angle. I'd have to put someone down there that has just a car, or maybe a small truck. And so, that might work out, too, for us. Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that. Can't wait.
Mayor, certainly there may be council discussion, but if and when you are ready, you make a motion, just simply do it as amended would be appropriate.
Okay. So it would be amended with a one and a half hour sign setup? So I would like to make a motion to approve the use of Lake Street Public Parking Lot and the placement of signs as amended, oh no, subject to the conditions noted as amended for the two thousand and fifteen Farmer's Market. Does that make more sense? Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Chipper?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon.
Yes. Lucy Carey.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is a recommendation with respect to a two thousand and fifteen wheel loader. On February tenth, two thousand and fifteen, the city did hold a bid opening for the purchase or lease of a new wheel loader for the Public Works Department. This is something that's been our capital improvements plan for quite a while, and as I think most of you know, is critical to our snow and ice operations that we, that we provide to the community. There were three bids that were received, and were summarized as following in the chart that's in your packet. And determining the best bid on the equipment, there were a variety of factors that were considered. And Owen, if I may, maybe turn the table a little bit over to you to try to explain the four bullets, that would be helpful.
Sure, that's fine. I think Ken Payne is in the audience, our street supervisor, and I'll give him most of the credit, because I work with calculators and keyboards and definitely not wheel loaders. So he was very helpful in the specifications and helping us analyze the bids. We are deciding to go on a, for a five-year lease on this piece of equipment. It's something we've thought about for a long time, and both for cash flow and future updating purposes, we are recommending a five-year lease at this point. The vendor that we're going to recommend has said that at the end of the five years, you know, you can choose to buy it, or choose to just give it back and get a new one. So based on the five-year lease prices, we are recommending that option. There were several items that the users of the equipment preferred with our recommended model over the other ones. We are recommending the Volvo, I believe it's the N ninety-G model from Alta Equipment, dealing with the larger cab space, which enhance the usability and the visibility for the operator. The visibility of the forks when they're going into a pallet was one other item that the operators mentioned as an efficiency and safety item. Little bit bigger bucket size, which is something that, again, the operators and Ken recommended as an option. The, some of the published specs said nine-foot-three dump clearance versus nine-foot-one. There's a little bit of debate on, it's pretty small anyways, but whether the final specifications were much different on that one. But essentially, dump clearance is how high it lifts before you can dump it into the back of our truck. So the, up to a point, the higher, the better on that one. So based on some of those factors, we are recommending at this point that a five-year lease for a wheel loader be awarded to Alta Equipment of Traverse City in the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars per year, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the lease documents.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation as presented, that we get into a five-year lease and execute the mayor and city clerk to execute those lease documents, and that they award go to Alta Equipment of Traverse City in the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars per year.
I'll support that. Alta executing the mayor and the clerk.
I know I said it.
No, then you fix it, then you fix it. I couldn't do this.
I will add that they let me drive the wheel loader, but that was when Alta still owned it, and I will not drive it once we take ownership of it, because then the risk falls to us. So it was fun, though, you know, it was my ten minutes of fame.
I did have, one question, too, is I know, is it about a year and a half ago, when we started replacing some of the seats for the drivers? Would this be one of those pieces of equipment we'd wanna do that with, where we put the seating with the, um, vans? Is that not one?
It's outside the boundaries of my expertise officially now, so Ken may be able to...
Ken?
We actually went with the bid, when we put it out, we asked for more of the deluxe seat, just to forego all that from now on. And that's the same thing we're gonna do with the trucks and any other equipment coming up. Because that made a big difference. That was huge.
You guys are in over a long time.
Yes. Yeah, in fact, I mean, there was times last year that we ran several hours, and we got out and felt good. And actually, some of us went and ran sidewalk tractor after that, so that's saying a lot.
I've heard multiple workers say they can actually get out now and walk, whereas before.
Yeah, yeah, and it's no joke. I mean, that was, for real, you'd get out and you'd, it'd take a while to actually stand up and work everything out. It makes, it makes a big difference.
The front visibility piece, I thought that's huge.
Yeah, when you're sitting in there, usually, our loaders that we've got now, it takes two people, really, to run it, to get the feel of it. But with the Volvo, I've ran some L-seventies, and everything's kind of tucked up underneath, and so you can see out at the end of them. And so we get deliveries during the day, and there might only be one person there, and the truck driver really doesn't know that they can't see. And so, that'll help a lot.
I think that's important. Okay, thank you.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Malama? Chipper?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Lucy Carey.
Moving along, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is a request regarding revision to the city council meeting schedule. As was previously presented to council, at the end of last year, when the city adopted its two thousand and fifteen meeting schedule, we mentioned that there may be a special election called by the state that in fact did occur, and the state did set up a special election for May fifth, two thousand and fifteen. The recommendation at this time is to cancel then our May fourth, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting schedule. As we've done in the rather recent history, by canceling that meeting before, it does enable our city clerk and staff, maintenance staff and other folks plenty of time to get this room set up and ready for the election. And certainly, if there is the need, you can always look at, at any time, calling a special meeting, if necessary.
We were considered, I know, I've always brought that concern up about canceling too many meetings, but instead just giving it so we had someone else take the spot of a clerk that evening, so we still get an opportunity. I just, I know, last year, I kind of watched this, we try to keep our meetings down to time, but when we start missing meetings, we're putting double agendas onto a meeting, and then we are here long, but...
It's the one roll call, remember? We need the roll. It's, it's very, very, very big.
It's sad enough to make you that.
An hour earlier, too, we used to go seven, where we'd have a little more time. But I just always worry about us canceling too many meetings, so the...
I think we're not gonna have as many elections this year, so that might be the only one in fact.
There's one in Maraville.
Oh. Serious. Okay. Do we have a motion on that? I will make a motion to cancel the May fourth council meeting due to the election on May fifth, noting that if there is pending business, we can call a special meeting. Support, but I have a question. Is the budget gets voted on the second meeting of May, is that correct?
Second year.
And the purpose of this meeting is to sometimes address some budgetary issues that might come up?
Could be, and we could certainly, like I mentioned, if we needed a lease schedule, as time goes on, and we know better where we're at, we could always, there's a possibility you might have a special meeting that we set sometime later on at least, if we need to.
Okay. Okay. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Chipper?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Malama?
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Lucy Carey.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item, or last item under the mayor's report this evening, is just simply a runwater update, wanting to take this opportunity, once again, to publicly mention that the city is under a runwater order. We did send out notices to all water customers. There's been a press release that went out, it's had coverage both online in the newspaper and in TV media form. The runwater will be in effect until the city comes out, and then in a similar fashion advises people that it's over. So as we're heading into potentially warmer temperatures over the next few weeks, hopefully, potentially, yes, and certainly into the spring, please, 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 keep your water running constantly. Even if you shut it off for a second, you run the risk of freezing almost instantly. You gotta keep it running. Similar to what we did last year, we'll come back with, if you will, sort of an after-action report advising council, to the best that we know, how many folks froze up, what's in the classroom, as far as our rate of caring had been, and that probably happened sometime again in the summer, like what we did, we did last year. Last year, we were thinking it was an anomaly, but here we are, along with many other communities, right back at it again this year. So hopefully, this doesn't become just a future trend, a sign of some kind of climate change. But it's, it's an issue, and we're doing what we can to try to protect our infrastructure and make sure that folks are protecting theirs as well.
Another question. Are people having their water freeze up even with the water running?
I suppose it's possible. I've heard that people have called in, that they've said that with your water running, it still froze up. I couldn't...
Ours was almost frozen this morning, and it's been running. And my husband and I was really worried, because when we turned it on, it was barely coming out. We were running it all night. So, you know, it's, and he thinks that that pencil lead, description might not be enough.
It's a pencil lead, yeah.
If I may, initially, we...
Hey, Chris, don't hurt her.
This year, we changed, people don't notice, but in the description, we changed it to a gallon every fifteen minutes, which is about the size of a pencil lead. We're really pushing this gallon every fifteen minutes, because I think some people are doing it the size of a mechanical pencil lead, and that is just not enough. So it is a gallon every fifteen minutes. If you think you're prone to freezing, run it faster. It's cheaper to run that water and have a little higher build than to have it dug up. If your water starts turning yellow, that's a sign that your pipes are freezing. If the water starts slowing down, that's a sign. Again, any of those signs, turn on the water for an hour, two hours, let it run, and when you put it back, put it back faster than what you had it. Obviously, if it was freezing at whatever rate you had it, you're gonna need to go a little faster to make sure that won't freeze. And as Marcus said, we've had people that said they froze. Why running it? I've had people said they have three or four faucets running full bore, and they froze. Well, you can't freeze with three or four faucets running full bore. If you did, there's nothing we can do to help you, because it's freezing that fast. And that much water is almost what the pipe can deliver to your house. You can't move faster than that. So I think a lot of people were trained since we're kids, shut off that faucet, don't waste the water. And so when we set that pencil lead for that stream, we go on the small size instead of the larger size that would keep the faucets running. So at least a gallon every fifteen minutes. You know, if you're worried, I mean, take a eight-ounce cup from your baking cup and fill it, and see how long it takes, and then do the math, you know, it'd be, what, sixteen of those, so times by sixteen, and get how many minutes it'd take to get there.
Be quick.
So, yeah, a gallon every fifteen minutes, but do the math, and if it starts freezing, if you're worried, do it a little faster, so.
If I may, just also add on to that end, similar to what we did last year, we have been in touch with the Rexford County Emergency Management Department. They're certainly aware of the situation. Should there become essentially a community catastrophe, there are opportunities that could be put into place to help provide potable water. Our fire department does have a drinking water, potable water hose. Again, should, should the need be that we actually get many people coming, we can fill up containers and so forth. Here at City Hall, otherwise, there's certainly one of them to come in, and we can fill up people's containers just with our, with our sink and the fire department, as we offered again last year. We clearly would prefer that people keep their water running, and that they don't freeze up and have to use spitfires and so on. If they do freeze up, there are a few licensed contractors. And Jeff, do we have a list of those contractors?
Yeah, we have a list of, I do believe it's five contractors that are doing work in the city. They have provided the city with insurance that says they're licensed contractors, so we know they're legitimate, and we like them to contact us, so we know who's working on our water system, so.
And so if somebody does freeze up and have the need to get ahold of the contractor, they can always call us at seven seven five zero one eight one, extension one two three, and get information that way as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Also in our package this evening, we have some minutes of boards and commission. There's a bunch of them. There's also an adoption...
There's one more.
Oh, ordinance and resolution. Oh, I apologize. I'm trying to illustrate to you that. Okay, let's do the adoption of the ordinance and resolutions first.
Sorry, I mentioned that, but thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a resolution to adopt the cross connection control program. In March of last year, the city put together an ordinance to amend our existing cross connection ordinance in place with respect to utility cross connections in the public water supply. We do need to have...
have a plan for the cross connection control program in place as being required by the DEQ. That's what's in your packet tonight. Jeff, are there some specifics you could share with us, perhaps about the plan itself?
The ordinance is just references that the city will follow the state plumbing code. The city will follow the cross connection manual. The actual program or the plan actually goes into details of what we consider a high priority risk for the city, what we consider a low priority. It also gives examples of the forms we'll be using to send out to residents to tell them when we're going to inspect, what we found on the inspection, what they should do to correct any deficiencies we find. So, the DEQ just wants, you know, first they want the ordinance, and now they want the plan or the program. How are we going to enforce their rules on cross connection? And the program's just basically spelling out what we consider a high priority, low priority, what we consider a cross connection, how we're going to administer the ordinances for the city council.
They also need to approve it as well.
Yes, they also need to approve it. So, yeah, but once you guys approve it, it'll go to the DEQ. Hopefully, they'll approve it. If they don't, I'm assuming they'll come back here, and we'll have to make whatever revisions they want to see on it. So...
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approved a resol- resolution, yes. Approved a resolution to approve the cross connection control program as presented.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Shippers? Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Melissa Carey.
He's got my cure, too. I usually get there.
Okay, this evening, we have the copy of the minutes for our boards in commission, the minutes of the Dog Park Advisory Committee meeting that was held on December 10, minutes of the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission meeting that was held on January 12, the minutes of the Cadillac Arts Meeting, Arts Council meeting that was held on January 26, the minutes of the Downtown Development Authority meeting that was held on January 28, and then finally, the minutes of the Cadillac Westford Airport Authority meeting that was held on February 19. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comments. If you would, come to the podium, have your name and your address, and keep your comments, two, three minutes or under. We would appreciate it. Seeing we will close public comment, we will move to go to the order. Councilmember Shippers? I don't have much. I appreciated a work session this evening and exploring goals as we move forward, and I appreciate the new format that makes it very manageable and understandable. So, thank you. That's pretty much it. Councilmember Stevens?
First, thanks to council for the late approvals of the board review. I take some blame. Every year, I'm like, we're going to get these positions filled way ahead of time. And it comes down to the letter. We did have, like I said, a couple of members that had to either not submit an application, or, as I mentioned, Tony Rubble had to step down. Also want to give Carrie Lanning a thank you. She does a lot with the board review on our staff, and she's been very busy through this transition with the board members the last couple of weeks. To give her a thank you as well. And to Owen Roberts, for helping put together that information piece that goes along with the tax statements. And if any of the public is listening, that statement gives a bit of explanation of the tax information, but also is a larger area to see where our board meetings are. But just wanted that the public know Tuesday, the 10th, will be our first one from 9 to 4, and then the 12th is a Thursday from 3 to 9 p.m., and then on the 17th, St. Patrick's Day, if you want to come down 9 to 4 as well, for any of the public wants to come to the board review, those are the times. So, wanted to just mention that as well. Compliments to the street department. It's amazing, after some of these storms, how fast the roads are clear. And then I've gotten multiple calls the last couple of weeks about the sidewalks, if I will. The sidewalks have been plowed, so wanted to just pass that on as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Steadler?
I'm wondering if there's any update on the filling of the, or the search for community development officer, and what that timeline is. And also, if there's any update on any FOIA requests that we've received since the last time we met. We talked about them at our last meeting. And if there's any update about any FOIA requests that seem difficult, or whatever we were talking about last time, taking a lot of resources to fill. And that's all I have. And so...
Okay.
Thank you. The first thing I wanted to mention was I received a letter earlier last week from the State of Michigan's Fire Training Officer. And forgive me, because I actually left the letter in my office, and I was going to refer to it. But I wanted to publicly mention that it was a very nice letter to receive, called out a few staff members specifically about how wonderful it has been to work with them and using our facility for hosting training. And it was very complimentary of the City of Cadillac and of the City of Cadillac's staff, and of the professionalism of our staff. And so I just wanted to make the city council aware of that. It was a very complimentary letter to get, and it made me very, very happy to receive it. I did have, unfortunately, some tragedy in my personal life with the loss of a dear friend last week. And I also want to say thank you to my staff as a whole for helping to fill in the gaps when I wasn't here, both physically and certainly mentally. And it was tough being back here today after literally just burying him the other day. But I can't do this job without your help. Just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that, and people know that publicly. So, thank you. Thank you very much for that as well. Councilmember Spelman, we did receive a few more letters late last week. At the moment, I really can't even begin to remember about what all the details were, but I can certainly mention it in our next council meeting and update the council accordingly. But we did, I know we received a few more over the last couple of weeks. And with respect to an update on the timing of the filling of the Community Development Director's position, we did go through some interviews. We are in the process at the moment of finalizing the employment offer with some of the offered position, but we're in the process of going through all the due diligence beforehand, making sure everything comes out okay before we're ready to make any kind of official public announcement. So, no candidate's been officially released yet, but we're really close to making it out. So, I'm pretty much excited about our future prospects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing that I had this evening was that I also appreciated the opportunity this evening to sit down with staff and council to begin our 2016 goal setting. We had a good discussion, and next steps are defined. But I'd also like to say thank you to Tara Vedler for being willing to be on a panel last Friday for Achiever. The panel talked about what young professionals in our community are looking for and hoping to see here in the community. So, thank you for taking the time to do that. I think that's an important thing for us to do, to give up our time. So, I appreciate that. So, that's all I had. For this time, we need to adjourn to closed session.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor of the council, if I may request that you add to it an update on Louis J. Richardson Jr., the City of Cadillac case, file number 14-25321-CZ. And you could simply say, leave what we have and say is amended, or is...
Okay. All right. Will someone provide that motion? Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268A to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager and public officer and employee at his written request to discuss a written confidential legal opinion with the city attorney pursuant to act to MCL 15.268H, plus the other item. Thank you. Plus an update on the case regarding Louis Richardson, 14-25321-CZ.
I just wanted to make sure, because I don't think we could address this in the closed session, but I know we did have a request by Councilmember Malama, and I don't know if there's a final answer on that about at least being able to be consistent on part of the closed session. And I know that, I don't know when the request first came, but I haven't heard a final answer in terms of if we would be able to do that in terms of the discussion and the evaluation.
There was a request that Councilwoman made last week. This afternoon, it was determined that there is in fact a council policy that the council approved back in 2010 through a resolution restricting the attendance of any member of council elected officials to a meeting remotely or telephonically.
I remember we did take action, because that came up. We initially approved the housing commission to do that, and then we...
We rescinded the housing commission. It was because of the housing commission doing that that we resolved that our policy would be that you needed to be present.
Was that policy relevant to allowing individuals to vote from another location, or was it generic in terms of allowing at least a discussion?
The resolution itself says the City of Ca... Sorry, City Council of the City of Cadillac, it's resolved that the city, by the City Council of the City of Cadillac, that no council person shall be permitted to attend a meeting other than by physical presence.
A little bit of a meeting.
It's a closed session meeting.
Right.
Official meeting.
And then there may have been, was there, I know last time, we were not allowed to go into a session, because there wasn't a written letter. Did we get a written letter?
Yeah.
That...
We did.
Okay, it must have just not been in my packet, but...
You didn't get it? Or it's under...
You can find it.
You got it? Councilman? No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure, because I know that there is, he did make an effort to try to get that in on two meetings, knowing he couldn't be here tonight. And so, that's the reason, if there was a way of allowing him to talk with that resolution specific, excuse me, specifically, so a meeting.
Yep.
It does.
Okay, so we had a motion for it. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Melissa Carey. I'll make a motion to return to open session. Sandy, roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Okay.
Mayor, members of the city council, at this time, it would be appropriate to consider a motion to accept the city attorney's recommendation regarding the legal opinion that's discussed in closed session.
I'll make that motion. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please? Do you have something?
No, I just, I think it was good discussion on that topic, and the information. It's just, there was a lot there to try to compile tonight and make a decision. And I, you know, I don't know the timeliness of it, but of holding off a little for us to do a little review would be appreciated.
Okay, Sandy, roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Melissa Carey. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.